Dodd is recording for personal use. Changes to the agenda, Jim? Jane?
I'll defer. I'm not the first one of them.
Bill? You're up.
All right. That was quick. I like to introduce myself. My name is Bill Stotfield. I'm based in this township for 30 some, a lot longer. My show number raised here and I work here. So I'm pretty much embedded now. Why am I here? I'm not here to embarrass anybody. I've got to read this or I'll forget the whole thing. But I would bring something to everybody's attention. And that is, in the zoning ordinance, which was put together many years ago, which I had a part, some 369 pages. So I can understand why some things get forgotten. But I would like to remind everybody that something needs to be done about the old mill located in this township on Route 241, just outside of Colebrook. It's 231 years old. It is deserving protection and reuse and maybe other things that can be done with it in time. But it's now been recognized on the state level by authors and writers. Why can it not be given the same recognition it deserves by the township citizens? Which happened, this happens to be located in our area. It's very old. It represents our township. Many things could be used with this particular mill if it is in fact saved and it's still possible to save it. Now, I bring this to your attention simply because in the ordinances, on page number 323, it clearly states, Section 488, and I will read it to you for those who do not have a copy. It says, "Historic Site Protection. One, to provide the means that the township can protect and preserve historic sites and structures. Two, to initiate a process of public and technical review prior to the demolition of historic structures. Three, to provide for conversion alternates generally unavailable to users other than historic sites as a means of encouraging the preservation and use." If we summarize all this, it simply means, the intention of the people who put together these ordinances clearly wanted to protect and preserve things that are considered historic and old in this township. I don't think there's anything older than the old Riss Mill. Now, having said that, a former supervisor once said that if a society or organization could be formed, he would be in favor of going to the gang commission and asking him to return the property that is rightfully belonging to this township. And that would be the old mill. Now, people would ask, what's it good for? It could be used for lots of things. I would go down a whole long list, but I don't want to take your time. I know there's 13 more people who want to talk here tonight. There has been an organization formed that would be prepared to take over the mill. But the catch is this, the Pennsylvania Gang Commission owns it and they will not turn it over to an organization. They will not turn it over to an individual, but they will turn it over to a township that asks for it back. That's the catch. So I'm asking that the supervisors of this township and the citizens of this township consider going to the gang commission and asking him, although we have been asking them for the last 10 years. And I have a letter here that verifies that from the year 2016, written by Maria Pasidi, who I was also on this committee, asking that the township supervisors look into talking to the gang commission and working out a plan to once again convey the old mill back to the township. So it's over 10 years old, this issue. Also, I bring to your attention that a new copy of this document you may be aware of, it's called "The Heritage Trail," Lebanon County. The newest edition will be coming out in about a month. On that, there will be recognition of the old mill. Now, I don't know what people are going to think when I know if I grew up to the old mill, look at it now and say, you know, that's a nice old building. Why aren't they taking care of it? I think that'll be the question on the minds of a lot of people. And I don't think it represents us well to let the oldest structure, I think, in the township, although we're going back to the days of George Washington, to let it continue to, and the gang commission will do nothing. Their policy is just let it go and let nature take its course. But according to what I just read to you, we should not be allowing that to happen. We should be protecting it. We should be preserving it. Now, it doesn't have to be all done at once. I know this did not go, happened the way it is now and the shape it's in. It took 230 years. It might take 230 more years for us to put it back together. And I'm not suggesting by any means we turn it into a mill. But the structure itself is historical. It could be used for many things in this township. Conferences, a scientific station. I can go on and on and on. But the trick is, you've got to have possession. You must have possession of it before you can do anything to it, otherwise you are trespassing on state property. So I'm urging the township supervisors to simply live up to what we've already created. I don't think any one part of the ordinances is more important than the other. And I think this needs to be readdressed. And that would be to once again develop a plan, not necessarily take ownership of, but transfer the ownership to a responsible organization with certain caveats you can add to it. But I think it's time to once again go back and look at something that's really, really old, this town, that represents us, that's older than, older than the township. Older than the county. It's old, 230 some years. And we're beginning to find out that it's probably even older than that. That's just as far as we can trace it back now. It's part of the old Coleman estate. So that's what I'm sharing with the township. I have supplied each of the township supervisors with information concerning what has been done and what we've been doing, including the latest run, our newsletter called "The Millers Run." And in the first article we had was why we want to save the old mill. It'll supply you with more details. You have any questions of me?
Definitely.
Nope.
Thank you very much for your attention. I appreciate everything.
Thank you. Dodd?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a minute to commend the employee that spoke out at the September Board of Supervisors meeting regarding the remarks that Mr. Bogom made regarding the Board of Supervisors potentially taking over the municipal authority. I just wanted to say that I thought it was incredibly brave of an employee to come forward and speak at a public meeting. I'm sure he feared some sort of repercussions or retaliation for him speaking. I hope that's not the case. And I would just hope that the Board of Supervisors and the leaders of our township would encourage that anytime an employee thought something was questionable or morally or ethically wrong, that they were encouraged to come forward and talk about it and not be silent about it.
First of all, that would be illegal to retaliate against an employee, correct?
Well, I understand that.
Second of all, second of all, I stand by my remarks. And we can, and I haven't made a motion to this effect, but we can ask our solicitor to look at, there is a mechanism in state law to disband an authority. The reason that is there is for when authorities get what I would consider out of control. And I don't mean out of control for us. They can raise taxes essentially, they can raise fees, not taxes. And we go, oh, we're not responsible because we appoint these people. There's a mechanism there in state law to do it. It's perfectly legal for me to suggest it, and I don't regret saying it.
I want to make it clear, I wasn't issuing an opinion on what you said or what that is. I just wanted to commend the employee and I hope that's encouraged.
Okay. Pat Krebs, crosswalk?
Thank you very much. Before I make my comments, this is the letter that the Conservancy sent to you all in May 2019 regarding to what Bill spoke earlier about the mill. And this is the latest photograph of the mill in its condition. Number one, I'm talking on the crosswalk study that was presented at the last Township Supervisors meeting. And I commend the fact that a number of the crosswalks are really important and ones that we encourage having, getting improvements so people can more safely cross the street. Tonight, when I was coming across, the lady was with her dog trying to cross the street. And so I came out on one side, she came on the other, so we could stop the traffic so that she could get through. And she, it was disgusting. And it was the crosswalk on Market Street. So you brought up, that one was arranged by what, Woodlawn and trying to make traffic calmer and also the Woodlawn and Linnmar and Port Moreside, which I never thought about until I happened to be watching people trying to cross Moreside with the speeding traffic that goes by and the bend in the road. So all of those projects that were brought to you as priorities, I think are really important. The one thing I'd like to take exception to though is, the discussion was held by the presenter that in regard to the timing of being able to cross at Palmyra Road and Porchett Pike 322, it was suggested that PENDOT is eager to include motorists and that thus the timing is rather brief. And I have 10 years of bicycle advocacy has taught me that actually PENDOT is not the stumbling block. It's often the NPO or a local government that doesn't want to improve conditions for bicyclists and pedestrians. So, and PENDOT has changed. They really now are very engaged in active transportation. I can send you information to that. So my emails that I did send earlier, because I went to Roy Gotti, the Bike Bed Coordinator for the state, and asking what is the next step to try to get, to get PENDOT to join with the township and check to see if we can increase the number of seconds for walking across those streets, Palmyra Road and Porchett Pike. And I sent that information to you. I know I can't go to PENDOT and district to the traffic engineer and say, would you please come out and check that? It really has to be the town.
I'm pretty sure you have more pool there.
Well, I'm working on some other things. But honestly, I do believe that is conceivable and I'm more than eager to help the township. I was very lucky that 422, we were able as an organization to be able to improve the safety of bicyclists and pedestrians. And 422, when that project took place, and quite frankly, in 2017, 2016, 2017, township supervisors were great. They agreed to work with PENDOT when we did the resurfacing of that one mile, that they would agree that PENDOT, if you would, if PENDOT would put down the shared lane markings and also put up the DMU L signage, then the township would continue to maintain it. And that was an agreement by all three supervisors in 2017. And consequently, we have that improvement. And fortunately, they're staying in pretty good shape, pleased to know. So if the township had led that and asked PENDOT to include that in that resurfacing and it worked, so if we could do the same and make an attempt to make it a little safer to cross, which a lot of people do, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. I just want to make a note just for record, what you're referring to in 2017, I never remember voting on that. And I haven't had time to go back to look at the minutes, but I never voted on the Sharrows. Just as a note, I don't know how it happened because I actually have emails questioning Scott Galbraith on how it got approved. So I'm not sure how it happened.
I was at the township meeting when.
I know there was discussion on it and questions on it, but we never voted on it, is my recollection, so.
And I haven't come back to the meetings to see.
Yeah, me neither, I haven't had time, but.
But anyhow, you have it, and it was agreed at that time to go with the 250 feet per.
I don't remember that detail.
Yeah, well, I guess.
And I don't remember discussing that at a meeting. So I have to go back. Hmm. Oh, sorry. Any others? Oh, Jane, yes?
I was wondering what the status is on the recreation fees that I brought up at the last meeting. Did you review what I gave you?
As far as what do you want to know?
About the net surplus in the 2017 budget of $16,454 that was to go for, towards the two grants that were applied for. The grant that Sean Arba applied for specifically said that it would be funded through, the complementary grant money would come from recreation fees.
No, I have not researched that.
And Jenna requested that Lebanon County hold the funds through 2019, 2017, and there is no resolution justifying not the, not using recreation fees for the park.
No, there's not a resolution. Did you find a resolution? No.
No, there's no resolution.
Then how do you justify not using the net surplus in, of $16,454 to complement the $14,500 from the two Marcella Shell grants to build the pavilion that was proposed in 2015, 16, and 17?
Because every time we ever proposed those pavilions, it was to find matching funds. And from the history back, that since I've been supervisor, the recreation fees were always to go towards the money that was borrowed to purchase the park. That's as simple as.
It doesn't say that anywhere.
That is how it has always been.
It was said in public meeting and the current board has no interest in changing the policy. It may not be popular to you, but that was what was decided.
There's no resolution.
I don't believe we have to have a resolution for that.
To justify what you are doing.
We justify it when we approve the budget every year with where the funds are going to go.
Yeah. And it says that recreation fees are to go for recreation.
It is, and that's the park. That is your recreation. That was money borrowed from the general fund before any of us were supervisors. We've all sat in these meetings, we've all heard this conversation over and over again.
And there were grants to provide for the park that were used to purchase the park and improve the park. And the later recreation fees that came after 2017, in addition to this net surplus, what is the net surplus for? Where did that come from? Why is it in the budget and it's not being used?
From 2017, it always got transferred back over to the general fund. We have a spreadsheet that shows how much money was borrowed from the general fund to pay for the fees that were not met through the grants for the park. We've gone over this over and over and over. There's no hidden secret, there's no surprises, there's no money not accounted for. Every time money came in for recreation fees, that money was transferred to the general fund because they robbed Peter to pay Paul. We've said this over and over again.
But that was done.
Has this been going on a conversation for three years? Two years? How many years? We've had the same conversation, Jane, over and over.
But every time I go and look for additional information, there's all these discrepancies that I find in the budget, in all the documentation I gave you before that you did, obviously did look at, the stuff I gave you last week.
There's no discrepancies as far as I have seen. There is a spreadsheet that shows me how much money was borrowed from the general fund to pay for the park that they didn't have enough money for. It's a simple spreadsheet that has been there since I started as supervisor.
We also get audited, John. John, who's our, how often do we get audited? Who's our other findings?
And the people, the developers that are contributing recreation fees for the development of the park, they can ask for that back if it's not being used to develop the park.
You had to pay for the park.
It was paid through, through grants.
I'm not sure. No, it was not. There was partly money for grants, yes, but it didn't cover the whole fee.
Okay, my other question, since you don't want to answer that.
I think I just answered it.
Has to do with the status of the alley.
What is your question?
Which alley are we talking about?
The alley next to the post office. There is, this is the plan with the people that own the properties that were given over to the township to maintain the alley. And in this case, there is a resolution. And it says, from Resolution 3778, the township of South Londonderry hereby accepts as township highway all that, all that certain track of land, which is this, in the township of South Londonderry. And the thing that's probably confusing you is that it's listed as Drescher Road because one of the people that lived there at that property was Drescher Road. And it's not the Drescher Road that people commonly know now as Drescher Road. Being the same premises which George, H.R., and all, by their deed of right-of-way dated June 12, 1976, and recorded September 10, 1976, in the recorder's office and in the County of Lebanon, in miscellaneous book 90, 59, page 986, granted and confirmed onto the township of South Londonderry. And that means that by that resolution and the confirms by those residents, that the alley is now township property to be maintained by the township. And according to Act 19, from 1933, Act 69, Article 23, Acceptance of Land for Purposes, the Board of Supervisors may by resolution accept any land dedicated by deed to the township to be used as a road, street, or alley. A copy of the resolution, together with the draft or summary of the road, street, or alley showing location, and with thereof shall be filed with the court. Clerk of Court, a comment, please. Upon the filing, the, and a certified and tested copy of the resolution, the roads, streets, and alleys become part of the public road system of the township and they shall be recorded in the court.
Is this the information that the owner, the owners sent us a while ago? Not what you're just reading now, but whatever.
This is what I found in.
And all the documents that we've looked at and the solicitor, our solicitor has looked at. It is, do you want to tell him your opinion at this point?
I, if this is, I looked at one a few months ago, but I didn't look at a resolution. I looked at whatever was provided to me. And it was an easement, it wasn't due to dedication or anything to that effect. And I don't know if this is the same alley, I don't know.
It is, it's the same alley.
Well, this was the.
If you want to provide the township with whatever you have, and we'll look through it to see if there's any indication on us.
I've got this in your records. It's there for you to see. All you have to do is go back to.
Jane, put together what you want to give us that we can research. That way it'll make it concise for us. Because I'm not going to go, I'm not going to go on a wild goose chase trying to find this out. You have everything right there.
Well, all you have to do is look at the meeting minutes.
No, 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 no. That's what I'm asking for you to do so that we can go ahead and keep things moving along here.
Hey, well, it's in your files.
It's easy to say it's in my files. When were they in the files or where were the files from? I don't know when you got those items.
I think the, the important thing, in my opinion, I mean, you know, we need to follow the law. And if there's an actual resolution, then a previous board acted. I mean, is that right or wrong?
I'm suggesting, Pat, that you provide us with whatever you track down so we can look through it.
Because what we've seen so far has suggested that all we have is a right-of-way. And that doesn't mean we maintain it. And we haven't maintained it since ever that I know.
And you said it was Resolution 37-78 or 3778? I'm assuming from.
37-78.
From 1978.
And it was from the meeting minutes from, where is that? The meeting, Supervisor meeting, June 6, 1978. And that was proposed and it was approved by, where is that?
All right, but like I said, Ms. Pat, if you could just provide the township with whatever you have there, it would probably.
If not, I'll look up the resolution and get the meeting minutes to you. That's fine.
Thank you.
But, yeah. Anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I just have a question.
Yep.
Because I've heard this topic brought up before. I just don't know, what is the issue with the mill? Like, is it?
Nobody maintains it.
Like, meaning like.
Potholes.
Oh, okay.
There's flooding along their road because the MS4 things aren't being taken care of. And so even if the people that previously owned it would repair it, the flooding causes the road to deteriorate because nobody's addressing the flooding and it's just going to get worse as a result of climate change, which most people deny here.
So I honestly wasn't sure. I've heard about it before and.
So now you've got that opinion.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Anyone else? Okay. You hungry over there?
Yeah.
Township officials, do you have anything? Do you have anything?
Nope.
No? Yeah?
No, is there, there's another spot, right?
Yeah, you can.
Good welfare.
Yeah. Okay, we'll save you for good welfare. All right. Do I have a motion to approve September 14th meeting minutes? Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do I have a motion to approve September 29th workshop meeting minutes? Do I have a second? Oh, you weren't here. Okay, I'll second. All those in favor? Aye. Bill abstaining? Moving on, bill and payroll lists 1821 and 1921. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Sean, is I, you're okay? Sorry, just want to fast through that.
All right. Just a reminder, the Trick or Treat is scheduled for Thursday, October 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, the range date being November 1st. Weather permitting, tomorrow, October 13th, road repair work is scheduled on Porchett Pike and Chestnut Hill Road from the Sunoco Pipeline work. It should be noted that these repairs are being done at no cost to township. They're paying for everything and it should be a one-day job, in and out, and they'll be finished with that. Approximately 100 trees as part of the original Campbelltown Park and the Campbelltown Fire Company Repairing and Buffer Planning were replaced on Monday, which had pretty soon died over the summer because of the heat or over the past winter from the planning. So these trees were under warranty through the grant and were replaced at no cost to the township. Two of the three individuals that were out there working, they said that they were there with the original planning and they were really surprised at how the trees really took off out there. And it is looking really good. Five years from now, we're going to have a grove of trees, that's for sure, so. Township was informed last week that DEP has awarded a $132,000 grant in conjunction with Trout Unlimited and other municipalities for the Spring Creek Watershed Intimitation Plan Grant. I know the previous managers, other individuals of the township were involved in this prior to me getting here, so there was some heavy lifting done on that side. It's not owned or maintained by the township, but were invited to participate. This proposal has been several years in discussion and was led by Trout Unlimited, as more details are available, provide the board with updates.
Okay. Is that it? All right, thank you. Frank, hi.
Keep it moving and I might not really report out tonight.
Okay, thank you. Patrick, do you have anything?
There's nothing under my report. I have a very brief executive session with respect to legal and personnel.
Okay. Chief?
Since John covered Trick or Treat, word stop. I just have some, some numbers here. For the month of September, officers reported on 308 incidents and made four criminal arrests. None of those were DUIs. Officers issued 39 traffic citations, two non-traffic citations, and six written warnings.
Okay, thank you. Kendra's not here tonight for the library report, but she did provide one here in written form, so I'll just read it. The Palmyra Library Board met on Tuesday, September 21st, and will meet again on Tuesday, October 19th. The library board met with Kelly Miller of Garcia, Garmin &amp; Shade to review their auditor's report of December 31st, 2020, and 2019. The mortgage of the library was paid off as of August 2021, thanks to the Capital Campaign. The Capital Campaign still has outstanding pledges of $14,457.67. The annual fund drive of 2020 was a record of $46,668.95. The flyer and mailing of the 2021 annual fund drive will be ready next month. Palmyra's Great Give raised $2,025 for the library. The Phoenix Center resumed in-person activities in September. The Finance Committee. The Finance Committee has worked on the financial policy. The Steering Committee has been updating the board policy. The President, Don Klein, has reactivated the Technology Committee. The 2021 Summer Learning Program ended on August 20th. The theme was Tales and Tales with a focus on animals and other creatures. There were 298 children registered, with only 172 children completing the program. Fall Little Explorers early learning classes are in-person and registration is required. The classes are being held at the library from September 20th through November 18th. The library participated in the National Night Out with a table of information about the library's take-home activities for children. It was estimated that 400 community members stopped by the table, and that was submitted by Kendra Hoffman. All right. Moving on, Campbelltown, do you have a report for us?
Yes, for September, there were 42 calls, average first response seven, average response time, three minutes and 35 seconds. We assisted Palmyra twice, won five times, First Aid and Safety 11, Lifeline 1, Hershey twice. There were four building fires, one truck fire, one Harvester fire, one building collapsed, three no incident found, 12 medical assists, one motor vehicle accident with injuries, one motor vehicle accident without injuries, one assist police department, six power lines down, four public service, four automatic fire alarms, two canceled en route, and one gas leak.
Thank you. Do you have ones?
I forgot it, but I'll email to John if anybody else, they can reach out to him.
Okay. John, do you have anything for us on your end?
No, just to say, we've been kind of busy this, uh, the last couple of months. He made, we assisted, uh, first of all, we assisted with National Night Out. We had opened the EOC for the last storm I had that came through, and we manned it for about 12 hours. Fortunately, we missed the worst of the storm. It was, worst of it went to the east of us, and we dodged the bullet again, like I like to say. We also assisted with the emergency operations center at the Mount Grand Art Show, which a lot of that pleads over in South One Linderie Township. Coming up, we'll have the EOC open for Trick or Treat night from about 5:30 to 8:30, just another set of areas out there. And we're currently working on two projects. One is we're trying to put together a tabletop exercise that would involve the municipal officials and the first responders from our jurisdiction. And we're also working on a project to gather the names and information of folks out there that might run into life, life-saving problems if there's a sudden snowstorm, an extended power outage, or any kind of natural or man-made disaster that would affect their ability to get out and get services. We have some forms made up. We're going to start to shoot into the townships and maybe some other places over the next few months.
Okay.
Other than that, hopefully things will stay nice and quiet.
That sounds good. Thanks. All right, First Aid and Safety Patrol.
Thank you. So we had 68 responses in the township. We've all gotten the detailed breakdown of that. When we assumed that area, we honored Launey MS's memberships till the end of 2021. Just wanted you to be aware that we're going to be sending out mail in November soliciting for memberships for First Aid and Safety Patrol. So every resident in the township, pre-homer, is going to get one of those. On the other front, I just found out this week that we are being mandated that our staff be vaccinated. And it's not a mandator test or a vaccinator test, it's a vaccinator terminate is the policy. It's unfortunate, we have 155 employees, about 65% are vaccinated today. We're projecting probably having to let go of 7 or 8 employees, as we read all of this. Our hands are tied. This mandate comes from Wellspan, hospital by virtue of our contractual relationship. If it wasn't Wellspan, we contract with the VA, CMS, Medicare, Medicaid, et cetera, so we're going to get it from somewhere. This won't impact the unit here that covers its jurisdiction, and I just like to complain about it.
I, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Palmyra Area Rec and Park Commission, do we have anything on that front, 34? Okay. And then in our packet, we had planning, fireboard, and authority minutes. And then we'll flip the tape. Old business. In the Net Dome, revised stormwater plan. Chad, do you want to, Randy, does anybody want to speak? You don't have to raise your hand. Hi, it's good to see you.
The opportunity, thank you. Good to be here.
I'm sure.
Talking about In the Net and our dome once again. Just an update, did everyone get the letter that Chad sent in the package? So in the letter, we're just trying to give you an update. We realized there's not been any stormwater improvement installation after yet. The dome has come up and down, probably delayed at least once due to COVID and the amount of manpower necessary to compile to take the dome down and put it up quite, quite up, more than I think Chad realized. But nonetheless, the stormwater improvements have been delayed. We tried to outline a few things for reasoning of that. I will put out to the board that the financial security is still in place for the original approved stormwater plan. But our plan going forward, I'm going to hold this up. I don't know if any of you recognize that. This is the famous chart from your, well, from our Harrisburg daily records. This shows that we're designing at a seven and a half inches of rain per day, and when the dome is up, we normally get no more than three inches of rain in a day. We have to lean on this a little harder with the township so we can, if we look at a revised design, it's more to what I'm going to call a more reasonable amount of rainfall, rainfall that we're going to expect when the dome is in place, as opposed to the months of June, July, and August, when the heavier thunderstorms, you know, give us many more inches of rain in a day, and the dome does not knock up. So this is the first piece of what we see as the puzzle to head towards a revised design. Also, Chad and I have been kind of scratching our heads for several months, because when the dome has been up, we have had some significant rainfall. I meant to check that with the sewer, sewer plant, rain gauge readings, which I will, but we've seen significant rain when the dome's been up and no problems. So our head scratching is because the water's going somewhere, and we're not quite sure, to tell you the truth, where it is going. We have a feeling it is actually bleeding into the stone basin, sand, and whatever that's under the artificial turf field. So in essence, that is almost acting as an underground, what, stormwater basin, you know, collection basin, and letting the water filter out that way. So we want to do, in conjunction with our rainfall question, which I will present formally to the township, so we get a firm answer on that. We want to do some more onsite investigation, maybe even pull up the carpet, see what the underlayment or the substrate is on the field, and see if we can come up with what I'm going to call a more reasonable solution than what we originally got approved, which we had to approach it that way at the time, so the dome can go up. But it's no secret, that's a pretty extensive and.
But nothing's been done, right?
Right, no, those stormwater improvements have been installed.
Supposed to be done, but it hasn't been done.
That is correct. Your security is still in place.
Okay, so I get it's still in place, but you're talking about future solutions for something that's already supposed to be done. And I'm assuming you're going to ask us to be able to put that dome back up, right?
I think, I think that request.
I would think because the engineer, from what I'm understanding, can't approve it without us, is that?
So there is a permit that has been submitted to the township to install the dome, and at this point in time, it's a condition that stormwater be constructed, and it was suggested that they come before the board to seek an extension of that timeframe to install the stormwater to allow them to install the dome.
So I guess, I guess what I'm saying is I feel you're putting the cart before the horse, because you're talking about adjusting a stormwater plan that, like, that was supposed to be done a year ago. So.
Okay, we're still asking for a time extension.
Well, you didn't, you went through all that.
Oh, oh, well.
Like, that's your solution down the road, but no one's asked for an extension yet. I'm assuming that's coming.
The letter in front of you does mention that consideration of a time extension regarding installation of the approved stormwater facilities.
Listen, I have no desire to, you know, hurt a local business, but do you like coming here all the time? Because it's like over and over and over again, for stuff that can be solved.
This project has come in front of us a lot. We let you put the footers in. That was all about getting it done for you, but like, we're dragging on here. Like, what's the end date here?
I have not talked about an end date with Chad.
Well, if you're asking for an extension, you probably should have.
The dome's going to go up in, another tricky part to it.
The dome's going to go up if we approve the extension, correct? That's what you meant to say? You meant that, that, thank you.
If you grant the extension. The timing of the installation is a little trickier than we expected to, because as you can imagine, when the dome's up, it's tough to install some of these things. And then when the field is active, it's tough to install them too. So there are some pretty narrow windows of, I'll say, lower activity levels to try to get the work done. But it's going to, it runs November to March, roughly?
Yeah, but I mean, I think they're asking when we could present the plan.
Yeah, I'm working backwards for when you might get it put in.
Well, I guess our issue from the beginning is managed as a permanent structure. I mean, that's been our issue kind of from the beginning with a permanent structure. We're trying to submit that technically it's a temporary structure, and, you know, not that anybody could help it, but when we put it up and we had COVID, it sat there for 12 months, 18 months, or whatever it was. And clearly, we had substantial rains and substantial storm events, and we know something that's been installed previously is working well. It seems crazy to just deconstruct the whole area for a building that's up four months. And like I said, yes, it's going longer than it should have. Something's out of our control, but even so, we would just like some sort of time extension so he can present something that we feel is applicable.
Is there some way you can show us where this is going and what it's doing and how it's absorbing this water? I mean, is that?
We've done, well, we've run water and tested it, and we know it's coming out into the pond. But like I said, some of that stuff was done prior to us taking, you know, occupancy of the building. So we've done, we've pulled up some corners, and the only thing from, what we're trying to figure out is how it's actually loading the system, because it seems to work fine. We're just not 100% sure how it's getting in there.
If we knew that, we could put it on a plan and submit it to the township.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Sending up, we're just not 100% sure how it's getting in there. We can't prove it, we just know where it ends up.
Well, I think it goes back to the test question. How long do you need? Like, what are we voting on? Like, what, what are we?
Is there an end date in sight?
Because we're not going to, we're not going to say you get an extension forever.
True, true.
I mean. I'd rather just put it to bed, figure out what to do, and.
Yep.
Come to a conclusion.
This is the time where you give us a date.
No, I'm waiting to hear from somebody else before I give you one. I mean, I would like to think we could have the plan prepared and reviewed and squared away by the springtime. I'm thinking out loud now, like, let's say April construction.
Yeah, yeah, I think they're asking more or less when we could come back with a definitive plan, something that they could review.
Yeah. Is, are we? I would say.
Well, we can do both dates, I'm just saying. I get more like when we're going to present our case or what we're thinking.
What, I didn't hear a date. Was that April? Is that what I'm hearing?
Oh.
Am I hearing an earlier date? What date am I hearing?
Yes, I'm.
You're processing?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm waiting for Frank to force me to give a date. Let me throw out February 1st as a date when a plan, a revised plan would be submitted to the township. That gets us February and March to review it and, you know, get it processed. If we find a different solution, that gets us close to the April construction.
Yeah, I mean, that's good. You have to figure back two months of a review process, because I'm sure there's going to be back and forth, back and forth. And so in your schedule, build in two months for the review process, and you can back into when you need to submit something to the township.
Right.
So are you saying February is what I'm hearing?
Yeah, by, no later than February 1st.
For plan, for the revised, proposed revised plan.
Stormwater plan, yes.
So the extension would be?
Till April is what I'm hearing.
April of 2022.
Yeah, or let's say to complete the construction, go to June 1st of 2022. That basically gives Chad April and May to build whatever needs to be built.
When does the dome get taken down? November to May-ish?
Usually the middle of March.
Oh, March? Okay.
Yeah. With the understanding that right now there is an approved stormwater plan that's been secured with financial securities.
Yeah.
So the extension doesn't guarantee you that the township's going to be agreeable to whatever proposed revised plan that you submit. This extension, or assuming the board's okay with the timeframe that just was thrown out, which was June 2022, would be for you to complete the plan as approved by the board, either the original plan that's already approved and you post the financial securities for, or if the board is willing to entertain a revised plan when you present it, February, March, April of 2022, right?
Sounds about right. Does that sound right to all parties?
The fallback is there is a plan in place.
Correct.
And if, if all else fails, that plan gets implemented.
Correct. And I guess, for me, the bottom line is when we get to this point in 2022, that we're not having a stormwater discussion again. I mean, like, the permitting process should be very simple for this.
Agreed.
All right, so I don't, I don't want to have a discussion, John and I, or whoever's doing this, reaching out to Chad, saying, hey, we're moving into November, and we don't have a stormwater plan yet, so. So that's going to, you know, again, Randy, that's going to require the plan getting submitted, reviewed, and approved by the board.
Yes.
And implemented.
And we will expedite that with contact to your office well ahead of maybe a formal submission.
And should we, want to put a definitive date on June 2022?
I think honestly you should just move it to the, to the fall, because it doesn't go back up without the stormwater. Then we're not having conversations about spring weather and whatever else, so.
That's.
October 1st, that way if you're applying for the permit, that's 30 days till you put it.
That's an extender of the 20.
That's right. See, I'm always thinking, right?
So October 1, 2022, complete of the construction of either the plan that's already been approved, or if there's a revised plan that the township is agreeable to.
And the dome does not go up without an approved plan?
The dome does not go up, and potentially the township draws on the financial securities that's already been posted.
Yay, nay. Do I have a motion to that extent?
Two, yeah.
Yeah?
Second.
Okay. Questions? Comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, Mount Gretna sewer line replacement, additional option number two.
I'm going to defer that to John.
John, okay.
If you recall, one of the things that we were looking at and we reviewed at a previous board meeting was various options to address the above-ground sewer line out in Mount Gretna. We already voted on a recommendation of one of those options, and I was out with the engineers, starting to work on, trying to figure out the details of everything, and the owner of the property, Ginado, came out there to take a look at the things. And we were walking the property, and he was saying, well, there's other options out there. And we walked around, and we talked about, oh, well, yeah, we could go ahead and move the line up along the road, but the depth on that would be incredible, costly, and it just doesn't make sense on that. And then we started looking at another path, and there's a stormwater drain area down there. And in talking with the engineers and in talking with the owner of the property, the owner of the property was concerned about some of the virgin timber there, and along the stormwater path, it really would not be very evasive if you would go through that area and would maintain some of the trees that are out there. A few of them might still have to come down. But in looking at that, I talked to the engineer, I said, throw a proposal together just to see what the cost and what the issues are on that, because I said, ultimately, township needs to get easements from the owner on this. And if he's against what's going on, the price just went up with legal fees, engineering fees, review fees, and things like that. I said, in talking with him when we went to leave, he actually liked the proposal that we all kind of sat there and talked about, and that's what's before the board at this point in time. So. So it's a little more expensive because you're dealing with a little bit of roadwork there than other than what I believe that we'd be replacing. But in the, in the end, it would get buy-in of all parties. And in the long run, it may save the township some money and be less invasive to that area.
So what would be our next step on this?
The next step would be to basically work with the engineers and have them start working on the survey, if it would be option, the previous option that we approved or this option that we would agree with. Then, once we would have that survey, then we could work with the attorney to work on, what do you call that? The?
Well, there's gonna be, I'm assuming there's gonna be an easement necessary for the new line along the property, as well as probably a temporary construction easement if there's gonna be movement and operations outside of the permitting easement.
So my question is, can we get that approval of which plan before the survey and all that stuff happens from the property owner?
We could do.
Only because it's a, it's a difference.
They have to provide a bit of a preliminary design work to make sure it's all gonna work. I mean, they did a theoretical plan, but they have to provide, correct from wrong, frankly, they provided, you know, okay, we scratched it on paper. Now we gotta go survey and make sure it's actually gonna work. And then usually at that point's when you go looking for easements and.
We'll need exhibits to the easements that'll show exactly where, you know, these easements are. And you get that from the plan and the design. I think that, I think your next step is, are we talking about 6A?
There's six and 6A. I mean, and there's a difference in price. I just, being a penny pincher that I am, would prefer to know if, I mean, if the if the property owner is completely unhappy with six, then we have, he is completely unhappy with six. Okay, so we have no option but 6A then. Okay, never mind. That was my question.
You're gonna eat the $70,000 in difference up real quick if he decides he has one.
Yes, I just didn't know how in the ground firm he was on.
Every time I go out there, I swear I'm bugged or I have GPS on me that he knows what's going on and chip in me because he's there.
Okay.
And, but it's been, it's been a very healthy exchange. And it's been great working with the engineers on that because we talked about different options. And this was kind of a compromise of everybody working together on that, so.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that the first step is to get the surveyors out there and do any wetland investigation and then go from there.
And we think we can circumvent the wetlands completely. That's the other nice thing about this.
Yes, I saw that. Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay, so we need a motion then for Frank to move forward? Is that my understanding? All right, do I have that?
Second.
Any questions? All right, all in favor?
All right.
Did I just get rid? No, okay.
Look, we can take care of sewer things.
Bill, all right, so new business, Northside Crossing, Lot C2, text amendment rezoning hearing request. I thought you were leaving for a second. I was like, wow! Somewhere where you can show everyone.
Okay, good evening. Craig Smith with RGS Associates, along with Brownstone Real Estate. And we are here to talk about the Northside Crossing project, specifically the commercial area on the north side of Northside Crossing. It's about six and a half acres. If you recall, we were in front of the township in, I believe, 2019 with a request to rezone this from a commercial use to a residential use. And at that time, we got feedback from the planning commission, feedback from the supervisors, you know, and the concern was the loss of commercial land in the township. So since that time, we went back, we revised our plan, our approach, and we came up with an alternate solution, which is somewhat of a compromise. So what we are proposing is to rezone less than half of what we originally intended to rezone. So there's about three acres in the middle here in this brown area to multifamily residential. The flanking areas, two acres over here, 1.3 acres on this side will remain in the commercial use. And the idea would be that we really have the ability to extend this existing apartment project while still retaining commercial area on the corner here, which is ideal, and on this side, which is adjacent to the bank and to other commercial uses. So we came up with a concept, revised concept, and understand this is just a concept because we're here to talk about the text amendments and the rezoning associated with the project. But this gives the township at least an idea of what we intend. So if you look at this area here, this would be a rezone, the multifamily residential. We're showing 34 additional apartment units. And really, it's, it's kind of nice in the fact that it extends this community that's out here now and creates, you know, essentially an extension of what's already out there. There'd be additional parking here and obviously apartment buildings with flanks similar to what's happening on the north side of the project. On the commercial area here, then we're showing what potentially could be commercial uses. This is somewhat of a, you know, local restaurant configuration. This is a more of an office configuration. Again, that would be dictated more by the market than anything else. But this is intended to show you at least what could happen as a result of that. So we're here tonight to request and get the feedback from the supervisors on the more formal filing and rezoning and the text amendments. And then if the supervisors are in agreement with that, we would move on. The intent would be to move on to a formal hearing. So just to review what's intended from a text amendment standpoint, and this is in the letter that we'd submitted the September the 14th. We would intend to rezone this portion to multifamily residential, retain the highway commercial zoning on either side. Obviously, we'd have to amend the map for that. The part of this amendment is also relative to density. When this project, Northside Crossing, was originally done, this was a different zoning. This was an RR2, I believe, zoning district. It was rezoned, the ordinance was amended. At that time, the zoning permitted the development of this lot up to right around over 12, 12 units per acre. For whatever reason, when the zoning ordinance was amended after that, all of the residential uses, whether it be single-family apartment, townhouse, were all four units to the acre. Obviously, that's not an efficient way to deal with the high-density intent because obviously you're gonna need a lot more land for the same number of units. So we're proposing to change this from four units to the acre to a maximum 12 units to the acre. We understand that there's other multifamily residential zoning in the township, but that those properties are largely, if not all, developed at this point in time. And I will say, and I will guess and say, that most of those are much more than four units to the acre. So in one sense, you're addressing a kind of a non-compliant issue at this point in time. So that's part of the amendment. The other piece of the amendment is to revise the three parking spaces per unit, the required three parking spaces per unit, to two parking spaces per unit. Again, when this park, this project was done, previously, the requirement was two spaces per unit. And we know from the data that's out there that typically these parking, these parking lots are occupied at about 50%. Actually, every time I come up to the township to talk about this project, I go through there and it's always around 50% full. So the thought is, we don't wanna build a larger parking lot that's needed, that's gonna remain vacant, that's gonna have additional impervious coverage, require additional stormwater. And we're so, we're requesting that to amend it to what was previously two spaces per unit. And this is the same plan as what's here. So that's part of the amendment as well. I will say, there is, and also, relative back to the density, there's a requirement of six dwelling units per acre. For, I believe it's the NDO portion of the ordinance that will need to be changed to 12 units to the acre in order, just for consistency and stability. So that's also included in this. Otherwise, you have a requirement. One requirement says 12 units to the acre, the other one says six. So we're trying to make that match as a part of this. So that's really what's before the supervisors tonight for discussion, for feedback. We were in front of the planning commission, we did get a recommendation for approval of this scenario. And again, we think it's a good compromise to allow as much commercial area as possible, but still retain some of this multifamily use. The real reason for this, and I know you've heard this before, is obviously this land, this land has been vacant for a number of years.
Oh, boys.
If I were to guess, 10 years this has been sitting out here. And, you know, really, the reason is the lack of demand for the commercial uses. We know from Brownstone that there's actually a waiting list for multifamily use in this. And we think this is a good scenario where you create, you know, this, extend this community. And the hope would be that, you know, with these additional rooftops and activity going on, that you would actually attract some commercial uses in this area. And that's really what's before me tonight. So we'd be open to any discussion or any comments you may have.
I think, can I comment first?
Yeah, absolutely.
Only because I think when you last came in, I was probably the most outspoken critic. Especially, certain things were presented as to the advantage of the township, but also obviously the advantage of you guys, which you acknowledged. I think in that meeting, I said, you know, it'd be nice to see it come back with something else. On the planning commission, I was not there at that particular meeting. But I did talk to the folks on the planning commission who were very supportive of this plan. I like what you did on the outside there, how you faced the units. And I do wanna see the commercial areas developed. And I hope, like you said, I hope this will help. But, you know, at this point, I'm all for the concept because you guys did, you did what you said you'd do. You came back, you looked at it, changed it up. I don't have an objection, so I just kind of wanted to get that out there because I was, if you remember that meeting.
I do, yes.
Thank you.
Jack, do you have anything?
I don't.
I don't have any questions. I'm, I wasn't opposed to the first plan, so I'm good with this one. I think it looks even nicer than the first one, so I think you guys did a great job. Do?
The only thing, I don't know if Frank's looked at this much, but so the brown that you're asking for the rezoning to the multifamily residential, immediately adjacent on top of it, that's multifamily residential right now?
It is.
So it's adjacent to the same?
It's, it's an extension of this. And again, previously, it was the RR2. That has since been changed to multifamily.
Multifamily.
So this is exactly.
Correct, so that's, that's okay. The one question that we should probably look at is, they are asking for a significant increase in the density for that zoning district. And I know you indicated that elsewhere in the township, it's all built out. But we should look at that because when, when you increase the density for, for that district, for that use.
I was trying to see where the map was to see where the other areas were.
It doesn't just impact that parcel. It impacts township-wide, your increase in the density for purposes of the multifamily residential zoning district. So you may wanna make sure, and I don't know if Frank's looked at this yet or not, to see how that's gonna potentially impact you township-wide.
So during the review process, the planning commission and, you interflipped that.
Yep.
So always reemphasize, everybody, that is a schematic right now. It doesn't mean that that's what will be actually presented to the township, right? That's what, you know, they kind of came up with. But the planning commission did consider the impact of the 12 units per acre on the other areas of the township and deemed that it wasn't a significant impact, that they weren't concerned about it.
Why wouldn't we just let it ride and ask for a waiver? Or I mean, is it because they're looking for, or they're, you know, they're looking for that certainty that it'll happen? Or, because everything always has unintended consequences.
When you say let it, you mean the rezoning of that little parcel to multifamily residential, but not touch the density and allow them to go to the zoning hearing board for a variance? Yeah, that's an option.
That, that's an option. And Patrick, you're probably more in tune with this, but you know, you have the conditions of granting of a variance and they would have to present a hardship to the zoning hearing board. They would have to develop that hardship and, you know, that would be a possibility. I mean, that's an option to consider by the board, but they would have to go to the zoning hearing board and present that, present that hardship.
I wasn't thinking, I wasn't thinking that I would end up the zoning hearing board, I understand.
Do you know offhand where the other multifamily residential?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay.
Now.
I'm sorry, I didn't look that up before I came here. Apologize.
We did, we did look at that. I couldn't say it off the top of my head, but I have acreages and things like that.
Yeah, I saw on your.
Some research.
Yes, I saw that. I just didn't think to look it up before I got here.
Yeah, and all of the entities as well. I mean, and there's a list of entities of, you know, retirement communities and things like that that are built out that have one density. It's interesting, too, just as a side note, when this, when this was back in RR2, the requirement was actually 3,000 square feet per unit, which is much denser than 12 units per the acre. But with, you know, be built with setbacks, with stormwater management, with things that have to happen, parking, that's about where we ended up, like around 12 and a half, which, again, from a proximity standpoint, may make the most sense to us.
I don't, I don't have any issues with the density. I mean, it only makes sense to make a match. I was just asking, you know, just try, you always try to, you know, what unintended consequences is it gonna have to?
The one other thing with the density, and I think you touched on it, you're asking for the general multifamily residential district to increase from four to 12, right? And the traditional neighborhood design from six, from six to 12.
Correct.
But the intent, right, of the traditional neighborhood, of the traditional, what is it?
TND.
The intent of having that go from four to six is because it's an incentive to do that type of a development. So if you just have 12 and 12, it, and I understand that it sounds like the other areas within the township, this might not even be an issue, but you, there's no incentive then if you just have the same.
That's right.
So, so it might, might be more inclined to maybe consider a different density for the regular multifamily residential, maybe that's a 10, and if you want the 12 for the traditional neighborhood.
Yeah.
But again, this is all, I mean, I don't know if Frank's.
Yeah, so here's, here's my approach on this. And this will be coming out when we submit the updated zoning. So, so the TND, and you guys, you know, do a lot of TNDs. There's a, there's a tract land in the township, right? Right now, the township has a TND ordinance, traditional neighborhood development ordinance. And it's more or less just a off-the-shelf type of ordinance, and it just gives an option. It's very difficult to take that ordinance and apply it to a tract of land. There's always text amendments and variances and waivers that you're asking for. So my approach is to kind of eliminate the TND as it is right now in the ordinance. If there is a piece of property in the township that they would like to develop, then they can come back before the board of supervisors and you guys can work together and create a TND overlay for that piece of property. Therefore, the township gets what you really want, the developer can work together as a team. That's what I've done in the past with other municipalities. Instead of having a cookie cutter type TND ordinance where it's not gonna fit that property and you're gonna be asked to do amendments anyway, why not just say, okay, if you wanna do TND, come before us, we'll work together, we'll all create an ordinance that best fits the township needs and best fits the developers' needs, instead of trying to shoehorn in an ordinance that is just there because it was taken off the shelf? So going to your question, Patrick, I don't think that's gonna be an issue with the TND because that's not even gonna be part of the ordinance at this point in time.
The amended one?
Yes, the amended one, yes.
Do we, do we have anything that's a TND right now?
There is no, what I would call a true TND-type ordinance.
Those are so tough to me.
Yeah, I didn't think we had anything.
And that's why it's better to work with the developer, if you want to create a TND, is to work with the developer to get that perfect ordinance for that property instead of trying to shoehorn one in like we have right now.
And I agree with that point because I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, for something like this, a TND ordinance is typically a minimum 10 acres or so.
Yeah, if it's a large tract of land.
Because that's where it fits. If you were to do it here, then we'd be back with, that doesn't work.
Right, right. So, that's, so going to your question, the amendment to the TND.
Okay.
You know, that will not be required at this point in time, so.
And that's, and that's fine. We have been talking, you know, we understand the ordinance is gonna be updated anyway. We're trying to, trying to mesh the two.
So I'm going to take their information, I can insert it into the updated ordinance.
Okay, so, just so I'm clear, so you're looking to incorporate this into the comprehensive zoning amendment as opposed to just a separate...
Yeah.
So you're waiting for this along?
Because we're getting ready to turn around and submit the revised ordinance to the township. So the timing is going to be, is going to mesh very well for this process.
Okay. I mean, I was going to, I'm not sure, why don't we see what the boards, and what your, if you're...
I think we're all fine with it, is what I was hearing.
So then the next step would be, when there is a zoning amendment request from a property owner, and it's going to require time from Frank and from me with respect to the ordinance, maybe not so much me, if you're going to incorporate it into the comprehensive zoning ordinance, it's always appropriate to ask for a professional services agreement that they execute so they reimburse the township for any costs associated with this rezoning. And then once that's done, it would be a matter of incorporating it into the zoning amendment if it's getting close to being ready, and then there's a process, it's going to go to the county planning, there's a whole process involved before you can actually adopt it.
I have one concern with that. All along, I know I've said, and I think you've said, that there was no rezoning to be done, and as in part with that ordinance. So I really feel like that should stand alone. Because I, I mean, I don't know how you two feel, but...
No, I agree.
We've always, you know, it's always been my position, like the intent of redoing that zoning ordinance was not to redo the zoning map.
Okay.
So I kind of feel, even though it's out here in the public and they're playing notice, I kind of feel like that might be...
Then the process for tonight is to determine if the board would like to have a public hearing on this.
It'll be first to have them enter into agreement, and then to have an ordinance actually prepared for you to review, and once you review it, if you're okay with it, then to authorize it to be advertised in a public hearing at that point.
The ordinance was submitted with this amendment? Did the proposed amendments were submitted?
Okay, I have the petition, the request. But, I mean, regardless, Frank and I are going to have to look at it. Do you have, do you have the actual proposed map?
Well, I mean, no, it's just in this form that it was submitted.
Okay, yeah, so that's not in an ordinance format that the township can adopt.
So the processes would be to do that prior to, we would take the piece out about the TND.
The TND.
And then we'd be in front of a hearing with the supervisors.
So next month, what I'm hearing is we'll have an ordinance to look at?
We'll get an ordinance together that implements the changes discussed tonight.
I got you.
We'll provide it to the board to review, and assuming you're still in agreement with it, you can authorize it to be first, well, first sent to the county planning commission to review and comment on, there's a 30-day review window for them, and then once that 30-day runs, then a public hearing will be scheduled.
Okay.
Okay, there's a whole process when they do a zoning amendment.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you need us to vote on that, or are we, do we need to make a motion to do that, or are we good with what we've just all stated? Do we need a technical motion?
We'd have to authorize them.
Yeah, I would say an motion authorizing Frank and I to put the ordinance together for them to enter into the professional services agreement, have to prepare the ordinance for your review and potential authorization in future.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
Second.
Okay, questions? Yes, duh.
I have a question here. What time of day are you coming? You said parking is always empty over there. When are you coming?
It's typically...
Because people work.
I know, it's like 6 o'clock, so prior to this meeting, I know dinner time is typically...
Because I, my cousin lives in, the townhouse is over there, parking is a nightmare, and I have to say...
I'm talking about the visa park.
Right, but I'm saying, I have a problem with like trying to shove as many things in as possible. I live in a brownstone development, parking is a nightmare. I think as far as the two versus three parking spaces, why would you not want to have more? I mean, in the snow, it's going to be an issue. How many people max can live in this development here? How many do you know?
That's a good question for Brownstone.
What's the maximum number of people that would be living?
They're all two-bedroom units.
Okay, so like, is there a limit? Can six people live there? Can four people live there? Is there like a rule for that? Two people?
Um, maybe. Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure what it is, but I don't think there's rules on, I mean, I don't think you have 10 people if they're around, exactly know what that is.
Yeah, that's a concern.
But it's a two-bedroom, two-bedroom units.
Right, I mean, I know a lot of people come with the two bedrooms too, so, I mean, that's just a concern of mine because I would question shrinking the parking from three to two. Is there going to be any sort of light installed over there? Because already, that drive is a nightmare, getting in and out of it sometimes from...
Like a streetlight, you mean?
You say a light?
Has there been any discussion about that?
Well, no, so, so we're such a preliminary stage. I mean, right now, we're looking at a concept, we're looking at, you know, what could happen with buffering and things like that. The next step would be land development, when all those issues would have to be addressed as part of it.
I just want to like, as somebody who lives here, who has driven through here, many other developments, I have a lot of concerns about this project. So in those discussions, you'll talk about any potential flooding that will travel down?
We'll have to address stormwater, we'll have to secure an MBS permit in the country.
And then sewer, things like that?
All of that will have to be...
When will that be discussed? Because I'd like to be at those meetings.
It depends on how...
So they're asking for a rezoning right now, so that it would allow for at least the residential portion of it. And if the township moves forward, if the board moves forward adopting such an ordinance after the PC removes or reviews it in the public hearing, then at that point in time, they, the property owner, could submit an application for a land development plan, which I suspect would show the residential development in the middle there, and that would address stormwater, it would all, it would address all of the land development application requirements.
But then that would be like a normal process, it would go to the Planning Commission, and then it would turn around and come back to us.
And it would be reviewed by the township engineer.
Right. But that's not what this is tonight. We're not approving...
I'm just asking questions, it was being presented, and like, lights are going off in my head, like, here, let me talk about this and that, so it's good to know that we'll have time to talk about it.
The one thing that you did mention, Frank, have you looked at the parking, were there concerns with the Planning Commission with going from three to two?
No, actually, two parking spaces per unit is more traditional than three spaces per unit, so the Planning Commission, they were, they were fine with it.
Have you talked to people that live there, though? I understand you're talking to the Planning Commission, but have you talked to people that live over in that area in general to see, hey, would you like more parking, or are you good with what we have here?
The two-bedroom apartments, I have talked to two different people that live there, and they're completely fine with it.
Two people, how many?
Well, I don't know how many are sitting over there in the two-bedroom apartment section. The townhouse section is a very different animal, and I would agree with you completely on the parking there, and that is a complete...
It's a symbol of the developments in this township that it is just a nightmare.
Yes.
I 100% agree with the townhouse. I mentioned that on the, you know, when they were in last time, it's very difficult. I mean, I, my son used to base someone back there...
There were so many mistakes in the past that I hope that all of that is being taken into consideration before something. I'm not opposed to this, but I'm just like thinking of my experience with everything else in the township, so.
How many two-bedroom apartments do you guys have over there?
There is 38 two-bedroom, 38 three-bedroom now, and these are all two-bedroom.
Okay. And across the way is a two-bedroom, or is that three-bedroom?
They're mixed.
It's mixed.
It's mixed in through there?
They're mixed.
But these would all be, what you're proposing is two-bedroom?
These are all two-bedroom.
Okay.
So in your, like, rental agreement, you don't have, like, you can only have six people in a two-bedroom apartment, or 10 people in a, you do or you don't?
Yeah, we don't, man, there are rules. We can't rent to 10 people for a two-bedroom. No, we wouldn't. They have to fill out an application, do some of it, do some of it there, something like that.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Yes?
My only concern was, two years ago, when this came before the board, it was mentioned that that's kind of like one of the only few places for commercial development in the township. So you have a 1.3-acre lot and a 2-acre lot, there's not going to be a lot of business that's going to go in those lots. So, you know, is this just the life for two, three years down the road, we say, there's no commercial development that wants to go in here, let's change this and let's add some more housing units in here? You're really reducing what can, what can go in the township anymore by changing away from commercial.
Oh, go ahead. I was going to say, I understand that, but we also don't have any place to build more multifamily residential properties either, that I'm understanding.
Yeah, the other thing I have, I mean, my day job, I do represent developers as well, and it's just, that market is just changing. So am I going to sit here and say that would never happen? I don't know, but I do know that, you know, when they're looking for places to put these things, they want people. And, you know, I'm hoping, you know, a few more people, and when you look at that area and someone says, okay, you know, and it is off, you know, it's in a good spot, but it is off 322.
And there's two sections in Redners right now, and that one section at Redners looks horrific with the mattress hanging out there and all that stuff, like, they need to get rid of those collection bins because that is disgusting.
You're not going to allow those right now, what you mean?
But, I, yeah.
So hopefully, those will get filled, but I don't know that anyone sitting here can predict the commercial market with certainty in this environment going forward.
I don't know that answers your question at all. I don't know that you had a question, more just, was that a comment? Or was it a statement of something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any concern from like a police perspective, more accidents, more neighbor disputes, more things like that? Will we need more police officers to deal with things like that?
I don't think for that number of people, and I understand you're concerned about, you were talking a traffic signal as opposed to a traffic, or as to a...
Something, yeah.
To a stop sign or...
A circle.
Not another circle!
I highly doubt that the traffic volume is going to justify that.
I mean, unless, of course, we get like a really smoking restaurant in the corner there, you know, that would be great.
No, that's not going to happen.
Like a Chick-fil-A? That would be fantastic. Then we can get a traffic signal, yeah.
Then we have a traffic problem, but we would have a Chick-fil-A. We would definitely have a traffic problem.
Then we need a circle.
Have you seen those things?
Just make that a circle.
Right? Oh, good grief. Any other questions? Do we need to do anything for Frank or Patrick tonight?
Pass the motion, right?
I don't remember where I was at. First, second, yeah, we did approve it all, okay. And then, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming back.
Thank you. All right, 2022 proposed meeting schedule calendar for next year, does that look good to you gentlemen?
Just if I could just make some points here.
Yep.
I did reach out to all the entities that were affiliated with it, they all reviewed it, got back to me that those were fine with them, so.
Okay, fantastic. Do I have a motion to send this to advertisement?
Second.
A second? All those in favor? Aye. Patrick, do you have anything to say about the next item on the list? Every year, we have, you don't like this agreement? Is it, you like it now?
They incorporated, did you floor it on?
So I talked to them previously on that.
Good job, John.
My recollection is from the years past, my biggest...
You were never happy with it.
My biggest concern was for confirmation that their employees are their employees that are working on the township's recording with their staff for employment issues, and that's been incorporated into this draft.
So you're happy with this one?
I would still like to see an indemnification agreement, but that's fine.
Okay, all right.
It has addressed my main concern.
Okay, fantastic. I saw this on the agendas, and I was like, oh, I wonder if Patrick's going to have anything to say.
They always sign it before you get it.
Well, they've all approved, everything was ready, it was last minute, and it was supposed to go last month, and there were some issues over there that didn't get approved.
All right, sorry. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion, but they should change the signing to chairman or vice instead of the president.